Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the order to Monday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Purgrove City Council Meeting, order. Roll call, please.
Rick Hall, Rick Fliden, three blocks, here, Tony Hannon here, Paula DeMars, here, Bruce Grant, Chris Powell, Doug Summow.
Open football comment? It's Brian.
Comment, yes. Hello, I'm Diane Bryant, and I'm on the City Council in Farmington, so I really do have some really difficult decisions. Sometimes they are pleasant, and sometimes they really are, but I'm here to discuss an area that, well, quite a few people in my neighborhood, I put it out on Facebook, and fifty-eight people responded. And out of those, fifty-seven said that intersection is very difficult to turn into. And that's the intersection if you're going to Purgrove, I'm Farmington, and you're on Highway sixty-two, and you're turning into Glicom's, which is right by the water department. There's not a street light at all, and you cannot see it. A bunch of these people said they ran off the road, they narrowly missed it. They do a different route because it's a real, real dark intersection, so we would really appreciate if you look at that. I've been talking to Mayor Falk about it, and I think, I think we have a solution. Just keep our fingers crossed, and we appreciate your support on that. So, that's it.
And if y'all want an update on it, what Mrs. Bryant is saying is, we do believe that we have a feasible solution for it. And so hopefully, by the time we'd be meeting next month, the solution would actually be done. But we believed there's a poll out that, it belongs to Ozark, there was some confusion on who actually the poll belonged to. And once we got to the right person, we believe it's as easy as us just sending a request, and they'll put a light on it. So if that's, if it is that easy, y'all should have a light pretty soon. If not, we have some contingency plans. Yes, ma'am, we have some contingency hanging. Okay. But we've also looked into some solar lights, how we could put our own pole up, now with these many issues and different stuff.
The one, is the, uh, just on the side, is the water hard side?
Yeah.
Or the radius of the curve, and the curve itself does not have any bridge.
That's true.
If you're not familiar with it, you don't remember, keep turning. But I think we've got something, something to take care of in the next.
Yes. But thank you, Ms. Bryant, and Janelle and Sue, right? We definitely appreciate y'all coming, and y'all more than welcome to stay for the whole meeting. You're welcome.
Also, it got like, uh, speed bumps, I don't know how, I don't know, uh, speed bumps, like, that, that huge, or do you have cars?
Well, they, people on Richardson, which is.
Yes, ma'am, that's in the section.
They, people on that street speed, and of course, that road is half Farmington and half Purgrove. But it's the Purgrove side that people seem to go too fast.
Okay.
And so they've thrown out things like speed bumps.
We, we do kind of use speed bumps as a last resort, as an extreme worst-case scenario.
On the road, but I figured.
But we do have, well, our chief of police is right behind you, so we'll put that as full of speed enforcement on that. We do have a mobile radar sign. It doesn't, it doesn't, not like it sends out a ticket, but it does remind you of the speed limit. We can program different stuff on it. Maybe it'll make people a little bit more subject to understanding that they're going too fast, and then we will add it to our extra patrol. Sometimes it may just take us right into ticket to, to, to slow some people down.
Because one of the signs, it says, new speed is twenty-five, and you were going.
Yes, ma'am, that's exactly what ours does. And we just put it on a trailer so we can move it around and hit some of our troubled areas. We'll take care of it. Add it to the list. You're very welcome. Thank you. Any other public comment? With that, we'll move to the approval of minutes from the October meeting of the Purgrove City Council. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Propose same sign. Motion is approved, and we'll move on to the treasures report. Do y'all have any questions or comments? Should have been emailed to y'all from Mrs. Kelly.
Yeah.
All right, here and now, we'll move it for audit, or file it for audit. And we'll move to item number six, unfinished business, which is our presentation of the Egah Payne painting. This is not the actual painting itself, this is a reprint of the painting. And we are, in fact, I will say, and I was, I was saying this earlier, but I've really learned to appreciate the decision for keeping a painting, and over the last few months, as far as working the profit of the restoration, and then this reprint, it really opened my eyes to what it is. And the Historical Society was a huge part in speaking in favor of keeping the painting. So what we did was, the city elected to make a reprint. And so that is a reprint, even though it looks just like it, they've done a great job. The frame that is holding on, that it's framed into, is the original frame from the painting that, that Mr. Payne donated to us, and then we just redid the plaque. And so as far as tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna present the Historical Society with the reprint of the Egah Payne painting of the Swift House.
Pretty much. We appreciate it immensely.
Do you want me to bring it to you tomorrow?
Oh, I think we can handle it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you. Would you take a picture? What, what is the hours that the Historical Society's open, days and hours?
The Saturday's from nine to twelve. Sunday, we have a talk to right now.
Okay.
We're working on extending the hours, but we are a district of new.
Volunteers.
Volunteers.
Saturday hours have moved since Father Monty closed. I'm not sure exactly what time, well, can they come? The volunteers kind of schedule that on themselves.
Yes, ma'am.
On Saturdays. It should be on the date, but depending what time they may be wanting.
Perfect.
But if you got two hours, daytime, night, time, we'll have to have.
All right, perfect. And we'll move on to new business, and we'll, item A is the presentation of budgets, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Oldridge. Do y'all have any questions?
Nice, well, we discussed, I think, everything at the budget meeting, and there were some changes, but you talked about it, the changes have been made, it's been faster than that.
I would like to add one other change. I've been really diving into this, looking at it, and I've been, this has helped get some research done. As given the mayor position of grades for twenty twenty-four year. I've been looking at other cities and municipalities with the same population and some less, they're making more than our mayor position is. I, uh, sit making sixty right now.
Yes.
I would like to make an emotion and move it to seventy. And that's, it's a sixteen point six, sixty-seven percent raise. But, you know, of course, we'll move it like seventy this year, make it more competitive, but we're still behind other cities. But at least move that position up, we're not, it's not so much paying, maybe it's doing a great job, but it's so much more paying the position. To make it more, you know, more interest come into whatever the position comes in.
I think it last adjustment was two thousand twenty, so it's been that.
And that's when you have to jump it.
Yeah, been there for three years.
Double, right? And like we talked about before, we don't want to get into that again. Where two, three, four years in a row, there are other municipalities, other cities, or banner mayors, you know, ninety thousand as an average, and we're now, we're have to jump up to thirty thousand. So I was like slowly moving, move the position up. And I propose, unless somebody has a better one, or, or that we move it up to sixteen point six, six, seven percent, which is seventy thousand dollars.
Of course, I think what I would like is to bring that up tonight, email this out, and then we potentially vote on it, because we adopted it that. I know we had, that kind of worked that way last time, and I know there was a lot of, I don't want to say regret, but a lot of us feel like it was rushed, and I agree fully, but I would like to do the due diligence, it's getting that, looking at it, and then approving it. That way it doesn't seem like something was slid in.
It, it was, we're possibly bringing the ordinance back.
Right, right, we had it in ordinance, because it was, that, that's right.
I guess the only thing we need is direction, do you want us to make that amendment for the budget before you adopt it next month?
Can we do?
You can make the amendment, right?
Well, can you do the?
In the budget, just, just don't spend it.
So you want us to go ahead and make that adjustment, so the budget is that from here?
I would like the budget to be that one, because if we don't spend, we don't spend.
I agree. So that emotion, do you need a motion to have an ordinance drawn up and amendment, I can?
I don't think so, because you're going to be voting on the budget next month, but I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
How big is the?
Looks like I'm seeing a lot of head shake, so we can change it.
Sure.
Let me say that I appreciate it, but especially since we have thirty days before y'all vote on it. And I've said this a few times, as people have gave me a pat on the back and said that they appreciate what, uh, the work that I'm doing. Also know that when I signed up for this job, it was sixty thousand dollars a year, so we'll, we'll take that pressure off of that thing. But do appreciate, and we all, we all love the pay raise, but also know what I signed up for. So that helps alleviate an impression for anyone that, that doesn't believe that. Once again, I know what I signed up for, it's sixty thousand dollars a year. I do appreciate what Councilman Powell said about the position, because that leads us to what I planned on bringing up, which was all the city council and our planning commission, and as far as the pay scale that y'all on. Because once again, we are underscaled when it comes to y'all pay. The problem is, well, not to say the problem, the unique, the uniqueness of the thing is that y'all have to bring into motion. So I kind of think the same thing, that, you know, I sent out some studying on, uh, city council pay scale from around, and am I correct, y'all guys, a hundred dollars a meeting, is what y'all did pay? Yes, if you attend, and planning commission's fifty. So as you can see in the email that I'd sent to y'all, if y'all checked, it Harrison gets five hundred dollars a meeting, Nashville gets two hundred, Warren's two fifty per meeting plus insurance, P. Ridge is two hundred, Formington's two twenty-five, Tiny Town's three hundred dollars per meeting. We match Alkins at a hundred dollars. If we just, uh, add all of them up and give the averages at two hundred and fifty-three dollars an average on a meeting on them. I threw in West Fork and Greenland, which I don't think we necessarily match, they definitely smaller than us, but West Fork's at a hundred, Greenland's at seventy-five a meeting. Even adding them into the average, it would put y'all down, uh, or put the average down to two sixteen. So I would almost like the same exact thing as we're talking to Mr. Oldridge about the adjustment on budgets is to at least look at a double, but I would honestly think that, that y'all should be getting two fifty a meeting. That, that's the average for what's going on around our area. And, uh, and then we probably would need to look at planning commission being somewhere around the one twenty-five, that, that halfway. I will say, I think right now, we do a hundred dollars a meeting for you guys, and a hundred dollars for special meetings, so it just matches on my, it's a fifty. Most, most of the ones that are polled, they do, cost at a higher wage, and then we're doing a hundred dollars for special meetings. So I don't know if I can make that, or if I can say that, or if y'all have to make that motion, but if nothing else, it's good information. Y'all will be underpaid as well, and eventually it goes down to the position. And the position deems more money than, than the city of Purgrove pays y'all.
This is very similar to what we just talked about, we moved before ordinance be brought next.
Next, next month.
So I guess we should be direction whether or not we want that one.
Would any of y'all like to comment?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment about rates from the mayor. I think you need a cost of living raise every year, too, like all the other employees get.
I was going to ask if we can do that about ordinance, if we vote in a cola for everyone else.
You can do it a number of ways, and I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I always thought the mayor, some read it, set by ordinance, but I've been researching a lot of other cities that don't have it set by ordinance. Uh, some ordinances read that it's whatever is budgeted on an annual basis, that's how it reads. So it's whatever you put into the budget. There are cities like Rabbit that give a cost of living raise, and it goes to the mayor as well, and it's written in the ordinance that way, so yes, you can.
Yeah, I, I was kind of thinking about the same thing, but I wouldn't be sure how it worked, if the position kept switching every, I mean, I guess it wouldn't matter, color raised, dollar raised, I mean, it's tough looking for it. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to do it either.
Some cities do, just like we do, and set, set the amount in the ordinance. Formington's is that way, but Formington's has a range, it's like fifty-five thousand, seventy-four thousand, and their mayor's at seventy-four thousand. Gentry's is that same way, it has a range from fifty-five to seventy-five, and their mayor at seventy-five.
How do they set the range? Is it the first term, second term, third term?
Doesn't say, it just says it can be between seventy to fifty-five and seventy-five thousand.
That doesn't make much sense unless the range is based on the, the terms.
Thinking is, if they have a mayor, that they don't feel like, I mean, I don't know.
You can't change it, so you have to change the salary before the final agreement.
But that's the way these, there, like I said, I look at a lot of different orders, some of them are where they can only say whatever. It's based on the budgeted amount annually, you know, that's kind of clean doing it that way, because whatever you put into the budget, it's like. But I can also see where there's a willingness tying it down more to a law.
Are we gonna, are we gonna know this amount?
Well, the best way to not get behind is to do small increments.
Right.
On schedule. Still be behind, but at least you're bumping some. Well, I, I mean, I said it the other night, I don't know if that was on the record or not, but I, to me, these are positions paid, not people. I think we'd all, just like Fox said, we'd probably all do it for free, because we want to be here. But to me, we want to make these seats desirable, because we want the best people to be able to sit in these seats. And so if that means we raise everyone's, then so be it.
And, and I have talked to, in fact, they're trying to recruit me on the court for the last three weeks, and I've been telling them no. And they, they pay pretty well, yes.
It's eight hundred dollars.
And, you know, the point was made, me, that, you know, you need to be able to cover your expenses. You guys have babysitting and travel time and gas and fuel and all those things, so, I mean, there is an expense to be like thousands.
What, what would it do to the budget? Does that run us to the negative, or does it?
I will wait and find out what you're recommending, and then I can maybe give you a better idea.
I don't know about doubling it, but maybe doing a piece and then a piece, so you don't.
I think you're better off this year anyway, because budgets are tight, maybe doing it. You can pretty put that into the ordinance, that it goes, you know, fifty dollars this year, fifty dollars next, or something like that, but.
That would get you to two.
What's the budgeted amount for city council reimbursements, right, twelve thousand, forty thousand?
Yeah.
Twelve, fourteen thousand. So if you doubled it, you know, you're talking about, and then the council, or the planning commission, their reimbursement is budgeted at about seven or eight thousand, right now.
I have a question for the, Fayetteville didn't respond, did they?
Yes.
Because they do a set rate, right?
So Springdale does a set rate as well, they salary, and it's maybe a little bit off on it, but it's a second job, I mean, it's like thirteen thousand.
That's what I'm saying, I thought Fayetteville's fourteen several years ago, but I wondered.
It's, it's thirteen thousand plus insurance, so they, they consider an employee, so they get the insurance paid as well.
Is it difficult to keep up with all the special meetings and all, like, would it be easier to have a set?
If they were salaried versus just a, a meeting pay, so if we just said, we're going to pay, well, you figure.
I can do it either way.
I want to pay per meeting, there's two that didn't show up tonight, why should they get paid? We all can.
Don't you get dead times off at work, too, that you get paid for? I mean, if someone's consistently.
Elected to show up and do.
And I would say, we, we've got really good council and have had for a while now. We have had members in the past that missed four meetings and were here. And so, I mean, I guess from that standpoint, it's still a thing.
But like, no one ever ran against it.
Yeah.
Because why? I mean, that's my thing, is like, you can hold someone accountable if they're paid a, an amount where you're like, dude, you're getting two thousand dollars.
And we have a member that about five, six, seven years ago, that's maybe a three or four meetings.
Yeah. Thirteen thousand is what we have, but.
So we double that, and then, you know, planning commission as well, you're talking about one thousand dollars.
I'm all either one, it's not difficult. As long as someone keeps up potential meetings, we want to find out.
Mr. Oldridge, if we get the information we need, do y'all want to attempt to double it? Is that what y'all asking for, or is it? I heard double, and I heard fifty dollars.
You need a motion to go forward?
I think, I think Mr. Oldridge just wants to kind of know what y'all want him to put in the budget, because we won't approve any of this to next month when y'all are approving the budget.
Well, it will have to be Parker to drive, or the mayor will have to be Parker to drive.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm, for both. So we don't want to put something in that y'all wouldn't approve, and so we, it's more of the conversation.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all do more than just show up for meetings?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
So if you miss a meeting, you're still doing city council work, correct? It's not just about the meeting.
Here's the only time the council actually does the job.
It still depends on the person as well, I mean, the one that I worked with a minute ago, that's was here for three or four meetings, that's probably the only three or four times that's funny, oh, yeah.
So could you put something in there that says, if you're not here for eight out of the twelve meetings, or whatever, then you're not going to get paid the full amount?
I think it's a message, yeah.
If you're not here, you don't, if you're not here, you don't get paid.
Yeah.
That's, that's, we should just man on a salary part, like if we're just salary. I think what, I think what Mr. Reeve was talking about was the idea of you show up for ribbon cutting, but you're not getting paid for that. So you represent the city in more ways than just showing up here on a, once a, once a month on a Monday. And so when we, when we, as we debate the idea of an, of a meeting pay, or a salary pay, we're only paying you for this, but you're giving us other benefits as well, that's kind of what you were saying.
We just need to be paid by the meeting, but we don't need salary.
Okay, so, y'all, right now, you're at a hundred. What would y'all be, what would the proposal be that, that will add to the financial, that, that the budget or the financial report for next month to be approved?
Take fifty.
You make a motion, I'll second it.
Say fifty, and then we do it the next time, right?
Would you like the planning commission to go with fifty, seventy-five as well, or? I'm not, I don't want to put word in your mouth.
Jay, thinking about, as someone who sits on both, planning commissions are quite the longest.
They didn't use, they're about to die.
It doesn't matter. I've been on it for six years, and last, this past month was the first time we didn't have it in June, and we're still here, two hours of Juliet.
What's the park's right here?
Those are big, right now, the special. If you do a half set this year, and then the other half next year, for vote. Then we'll probably be trying to get.
Yeah, well, because really, the average is two fifty.
Now.
So you, you, you behind, if you do fifty-dollar increments, you're doing that fifty-dollar increment for the next three years. So by the time you get to that two fifty average, you would, you would probably assume that you're behind again. And so, but you can still look at it that way, that we move in fifty-dollar increments until we catch up to, to what's around, and then we'll do.
If we give it two part of it, we can always make another motion.
Okay, you can, you can always amend.
We'll, we'll plug these changes in tonight, and see where we're at, I'll let everybody know if there's any problem.
What are you going to have to come up with, another fifteen thousand?
What you've done tonight, uh, is.
So we're going to go from ninety-six to nineteen?
Between.
Council.
Yeah.
I know, that's ten for the council, and then whatever we need for them.
We've added about twenty thousand this month. Twenty-two.
Planning commission from fifty to seventy thousand?
I agree with that. I'll take a look at it.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on budget talks?
All special meetings, just anything.
Just planning committee from special meeting, stay fifty?
Yeah.
Would y'all like special committee meeting staying fifty?
Most of those.
Okay. All right, item B is a resolution to approve change orders, and that change order is the three, four, and five with cross and construction, and I'm going to have Mr. Chuck Wiley answer any questions that come in.
That's expanded the score, the fluid and changing, and we find that the thing that happens for advantage, and so he put the change order for necessary improvement and expansion of the versatility. Some of the high penetration, both of the wall, and that is four, either sixteen or nineteen pipes. And so they were part of the original expansion ten years ago, because they were valuing, they, oh, excuse me, for future expansions. And so they took them out to make the price reduce ten years ago, when that went out, it kicked out, and of course, it's more expensive now than it was originally. And that's for the pack penetration, uh, the headworks, uh, for part of the four means on the grant, we got, and then there's the equipment that is not running properly, that's installed. And so we did research, and, and then it's the fine screen, beginning of people out of the grid, and that's one of the, of the movement for the system. And then the third one is the chemical feed system, uh, for the new, uh, thanks to help with our phosphorus control, running limits. And so it was supposed to be plums for a single feed, and for, for a double feed, and it came in as a single feed, so it's going to have to be altered. Each one of those are. And there's supervisors. There'll be one more that's coming pretty significant, and that's blood removal, and shifting bio units. It was not part of the original contract, which has the new equipment that is putting in the bio units. The manufacturer will not stand behind or honor the warranty. But it's going all the way out to the random factor, how much longer, actually, how long the heck do you do? So when we do the damage, it's a much better time, for people to be careful. And we did quite a lot of.
How much does the technical?
Uh, I don't know, the, what they're in front of me.
See.
It's significant. The bio dog will be significant, and that's not on the.
Fourteen thousand, three seventy-one, twenty-two. Thirty-three thousand, nine, twenty-two, thirty-three. And one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seven nonsense.
One hundred and thirty-two, four hundred and thirty-six, that is what they, like, they do. We ordered that piece of equipment, it's a long, uh, lay time to get it in here. And so we ordered that back in February, or March, you know, approved the part of it. There's two hundred and twenty-two thousand for the equipment, and this is coming for the installation and the electrical.
It was not part of the original proposal plan, it was a piece of equipment. We decided that it was planned for. And getting that grant money, so.
Is that paid out this year or next year?
Well.
Is that going to be paid out this year? You got enough money?
Yeah.
And we got approval from the Art Center, when we requested that reinforcement, so we could get that. We should be getting the four days, same.
I'm moved to approve the change order. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item C is the city ordinance to increase the twenty twenty-four water rates of city of Purgrove. Chuck Wiley.
Uh, part of that raise was already voted in, and, uh, back in twenty twenty, and it was supposed to be for four years, and this will be the final part that y'all had voted in, and the additional enforcement was, what, I mean, the victim wasn't, so it's on a ten, ten years. They attempted to raise them in July, and we voted it down, because they'd already raised it once in January, and so we came back with. Not going to do it in the middle of the year, we'll do it in. Our contract or contract even rate, too big. For a thousand to three.
So basically, this is a. So basically, this is a pass, or this is, uh, they're, they're collecting more and paying them more. They're gonna bill us more.
So like an average customer, what's the difference?
Probably a couple bucks, two dollars a month, please.
How much was they jumping to?
Forty cents per thousand.
Forty cents.
I'm forty-five hundred gallons, forty cents a thousand, so a couple bucks.
And I will tell you, this is part of the third party rate study.
Hasn't changed.
It broke.
Oh, it's done, yeah.
It broke.
I did our big dinner. Or a rate study, and what they give us their evaluation, we'll have to do whatever they say.
Will we have to have that done?
Next year. We have to have it done by the spring of twenty twenty-five.
So whoever does that rate study next year, I mean, it could, it could require rates to go up, it could require rates to go down, we have no say.
So, some rate is right, twelve point one is what our new rate will be in the water.
The city rates.
That's your minimum.
Yeah.
Right for a thousand, which you should be.
What's it says, minimum rate up to a thousand, twelve point one?
Yeah, yeah.
Then everything over is. Eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight, every thousand after.
Yeah.
And then, uh, rule is thirty-one fourteen, and then everything over a thousand would be eight oh eight.
There's been role play.
Have a motion in a second, any further? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Paula Dittmar?
Yes.
Reira?
Yes.
Chris Powell?
Yes.
Doug Stumble?
Yes.
The city ordinance to amend water rates to be ordained by the city council of the city of Prairie Grove.
We've been the rules, what if they get their reading out the waters?
I have a motion in a second, any further? Roll call.
Yes, Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Paula Dittmar?
Yes.
Reira?
Yeah.
Chris Powell?
Yes.
Doug Stumble?
Yes.
About his last change to just the rate increase on water revenue side, and also on the purchase water costs on the expense side, to match what the, they're gonna be charging us. That is a change in the budget as well, if we did make.
So treating more water to help us out.
We are up to almost fifty percent of our water, that's what it says, treated.
It's been sixty forty, now it's fifty three forty seven.
You're getting well.
Item D is the longevity bonus. We're asking y'all to give us a motion tonight, so that way we could approve it, and we could cut checks before Thanksgiving break. Um, the page is in front of y'all, and I know we talked about this at our budget meeting, the, as of now, at a twenty twenty-two year bonus was what y'all approved last year, so three hundred dollars for part-time or less than a year, four hundred for one to five, four fifty for five to ten, five hundred for over ten. Projections are the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five is similar to what we're talking about, we're trying to step everything into matching what some of the other areas give, and so this was a projection that me and Mr. Orridge had, had kind of sought out and looked for, so we would love to get it to that spot as far as the twenty twenty-five projections. What we're asking you for tonight is whether or not you want to stay at the twenty twenty-two, what you had approved for last year, or if y'all would entertain the twenty twenty-three or the end of twenty twenty-three year projections, which would be three fifty, for the part-time or less than a year, it's a fifty dollar increase, four fifty, for the one to five years, it's another fifty dollar increase, five fifty for five to ten, it's a hundred dollar increase from last year, and the six fifty for ten years or more, it's a hundred and fifty dollar increase for last year, and all of that has already been placed inside the budget, so it would not affect the budget. If y'all decide to stay at the twenty twenty-two, then it'll just put a little bit of extra money in our, inside of our budget.
Is there any sort of white performance evaluation done to receive these, or are they just?
That's just.
They're in the year long term, and they're just.
We've approved.
Second.
Well, we approve in the twenty twenty-three projection, or you want to? Okay, so I have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Larry, when you did budgets, did you project a little bit?
Uh, next item, item E is a resolution to change our office operation hours from seven thirty to four thirty, to eight to four o'clock. Um, I sent out an email, and we've talked about this a little bit in the past, and I sent out an email just a few hours before coming to this meeting today, uh, to not, to not push away from the whole reason why we're asking this, is we've spent most of this year trying to figure out whether it's pay raises, longevity bonuses, different, different benefits that we can give to our employees, that would basically incentivize them to stay with us as long as possible versus driving to Fayetteville and making five to ten dollars an hour more. So one of the ideas that has came across our desk was to do work and lunches. So, more than anything I'm gonna say tonight, it is really because it's a benefit to our employees, but there's a lot of ins and outs that go along with that, rather than it just being a benefit, but that is the, the overall theme is, we're trying to find ways to incentivize people to work for us for a very, very long time, or one day retire as an employee of the city of Prairie Grove, and so, um, number one is always the fact that we're trying to benefit our employees. Um, number two, most of our office personnel currently eat lunch sitting at their desk. Rachel and Meredith have to take turns most of the time, because they can't close the doors most of their time, um, they just bring lunch, eat from their desk. Ashley either has to shut the police department down as far as being the single secretary in here, or she has to eat from her desk. All of these employees are basically taking an hour lunch, but eating in front of their desk, so it's a huge benefit to the city, and they do it voluntarily, we're not like, we're in a bad spot, but we are paying them for eight hours as they work a nine-hour day, because the, generally speaking, we're grabbing a granola bowl and eating in front of our desk, city hall is the same way, um, not to say that always happens or nothing like that, there's a lot of times that we may get the opportunity to walk away from our desk and go, but there is a lot of times that we just eat from our desk, and the city benefits with an extra hour. The benefit to the employee, when we give, when we give someone an hour of their life back, and now you can spend an hour with your kids or your spouse, we, we think that that's, that's nice, it's a, it's a, that's a great benefit. Um, I did speak with Judge Graham Nations and with Chief, who's here, as far as their approval on it, and obviously, if y'all approve it tonight, they'll find with it as well. Um, I will say that the library already has, they, their hours is nine to five, they have a work and lunch. Um, police, fire, and our trash department all have work and lunches, so we're really only adopting this for about twenty-plus employees that are left. The street and water employees will, for the most part, adopt the same plan, although their foremen's, meaning Mike Dobbs and Brian Hawkins, will have the right to adjust that depending on work. If, if there's a water break, if there's something that's going on, and they're gonna take a lunch, they can take a lunch, they're no different because they're on call after hours anyway, um, they will, they will attempt, or the goal is to have them working eight to four as well, although when, if y'all decide to set our time, obviously, there's, there's some wiggle room out there for them, depending on, uh, the actual work schedule. And last but not least, we experienced less face-to-face interaction than we did ten or twenty years ago, when I started bringing this up to Mr. Orridge, we looked at the fact that we are walking into an electronic age, whether it's, uh, the Dropbox, electronic payments, digital exchange, most of our interactions now is either done in the middle of the day, or it's done through elec- electronics. And so, and a straightforward question to Rachel here at the court system, she, uh, she believes that from seven thirty to eight, and then from four to four thirty, she's may have taken five payments this whole calendar year in those two half-hour timeframes. So we don't believe that it'll interfere with the actual work relationship of the city to its customers, but that is a concern for y'all, we, but we don't believe that it will interfere to a great degree.
And I do think the water department probably has the most interactions. Just need to be really diligent about getting the word out.
Good thing about people coming by the bar. It's gonna be a little difficult for those that are.
We, we do summon it now, because when I talk to, and Mrs. Kelly may even be able to help us on this, but, but Kailin said that there's a lot of them now where they pay ahead of time, and we leave it out, and they just pick it up from the front, and so we do have some of those interactions now, and there's ways that, uh, that we interact with the public in that same regard.
During COVID, when we had the offices closed to the public, we did that interaction through electronic payments or over the phone payments, and we just put it out the back door, and then we kept on kicking. There is opportunities. And there's also, if somebody calls and says, hey, I can only come for four, four thirty, I'd stay here and wait for somebody to give a bill.
I have a question. My, well, I have a couple concerns. I love this, I think it's straight. First concern is that you're essentially eliminating their ability to eat at this point. So if someone needs to run an errand at lunch, or wants to go get their hair done, or something, now that's not an option.
So.
Right?
It, it is an option, because it's a, in essence, when we talk about a work and lunch, like, we give people around here the freedom to, to run to the gas station and grab a bag of chips, so it's not that you're locked in, and Mrs. Kelly has to sit in front of her computer from seven thirty to four thirty, or from eight o'clock to four o'clock. Obviously, just like anything else, if Mrs. Kelly is leaving every single day, then we're gonna have, have a conversation with that, and so, um, I, I do think that there's a lot of grace when it comes to something in this regard, and really, for all of us on, uh, the office personnel, it's kind of like what we said with y'all with the city council, we put in a lot more hours than the eight hours dictate, and so it really just comes to the relationship between the office workers and how we do it, but, but no, no one's locked in to have to sit in front of their computers.
What?
They'll still have some sort of a break in the morning and afternoons as well, keep them guys out of the field, so if they want to get something to eat, they still can, but it'd just be during a shorter period of time.
Okay.
Than a lunch hour.
Anytime we have an employee in the offices that are out sick or vacation or anything like that, usually somebody goes, it's all right, the one meal, we'll have a package lunch for everybody, and I think it's really hard for one or two people to get away when we're already. We have small staff, one or two people, that's important.
This will eliminate an issue that we've had as well, I mean, you know, technically, if, if you're paying somebody for eight hours, you cannot expect them to sit at a desk and answer the phone. But we have periods over there, especially if we got one or two girls gone, that one girl is gonna be answering the phone, or I'm gonna be answering the phone, it doesn't matter. So, this, this does solve that problem, if they're getting paid for it, it doesn't matter if they're eating lunch and answering the phone.
When you go on, like, January second?
Yes, sir.
City Hall's an hour, it would be eight for the water department.
Chuck, are changing your guys to a thirty-minute help lunch instead of an hour lunch, or is it better?
It, it really wouldn't matter, just like, we've already brought in sanitation drivers and the, uh, material growers that work in sanitation, they don't take lunch work, they work. They can, uh, they're incentivized to get that quick. And this is just, uh, Mayor saying, we have looked at numerous options that we can kind of make it more attractive. Just like raising the cost of their employees that they. When we have employees that have been here for one to five years, we want to show them their appreciation, we're trying to keep, put that in. Our biggest turnover is the first, twenty-four months. You get somebody past that first anniversary day, you're doing. And it always comes down to about a dollar. We can hire somebody that, they'll forget they'll go to Springfield for forty cents an hour. They don't realize the type of work they're wearing, careful vehicles, they just see the bottom line. So trying to keep people motivated and keep them sure, working in a city pretty good for a long period of their career.
The, the guys out on the street, um, theoretically, and even us in the office, when, uh, when I talked to Mr. Barker about it, it had a lot to do with twenty-minute breaks in the morning, a twenty-minute break in the morning, twenty-minute break in the evening, and most of it, and obviously, y'all know that I spent nine years working out of the water department, because you move around so much outside, and you're stopping to get gas, and you gotta go over here and pick up supplies, you're always just kind of, you always have a little bit more freedom than being locked in front of a, a desk anyway, and so we, we really putting a lot of trust into the foremen's that we should trust, because we pay them to be the, the boss outside, but on how that they would, uh, appropriate the day depending on the work schedule that they have in front of them, and make sure that the guys have the, the ability to run off and get, get a snack, and get a, get a quick fifteen, twenty-minute bite, and then get back to, to the job site.
As, as long as there's flexibility, I think that's great.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you guys already branded this? Like, has there already been a trial with this? I thought, oh, maybe you have awesome emails, I thought.
A lot, a lot of, uh, a lot of us already do that, so all you first responders do it, the library does it, um, and trash is already, trash doesn't have a work and lunch, they have incentive time, so whenever they're done with their day, they just leave, so they don't take a lunch, because if they work really, really quickly, then potentially, they can leave in six hours and still get paid for eight. So in essence, it's, it's very similar, um, in the idea that they're not looking to take a lunch, because you know, obviously, now your eight hours become nine hours as far as being here, and, uh, so theoretically, there's, there's more people inside of our city that's already on an eight-hour day work and lunch than there's not, but there's still about twenty of us that, that work a nine-hour day, now that's one, one-hour lunch, so you're still only working eight hours, but you're here for nine hours of your day versus the ones that actually have work and lunches.
And, and even our front desk, the part that we have now, Melissa, she works a short day, she works seven hours a day, but she works that straight seven-hour shift, so she's there through her lunch now, so we've got people y'all with.
No, I get working lunch. Have you surveyed the, um, employees to get a feedback response?
Yes, so far, everything is pretty favorable.
It's on you, you guys think it's healthy and viable. You guys know this place, I've worked here.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that, my concern was, the workplace is moving towards a more relaxed environment, so I think what I'm seeing is a tighter window, but if that's the consensus of what you have, maybe with the idea that any year, you would reevaluate if it's working for them, because I do think the younger generation is not wanting to be tied at their desk for seven or eight hours.
Just so everybody knows, mine is even more, like.
Go home and watch it.
I will, I will say this, just so, if it throws comfort to everyone, I don't think there's nothing we talk about that we know is not locked in forever. There's a lot of things that we swing for the fences, and we hope that it's a home run, but and sometimes you strike out, and I'll promise you, before it's all said and done, Matt Falk's gonna fall on his face, and he's gonna have to say sorry.
Camera conversation that we have, we talk about, well, if it doesn't work, we can change.
Just change back.
That's, that's kind of the topic every time we have it.
Wow, I appreciate trying.
The conversations I've had with my guys, and employees, is, we are looking to do everything we can to make it more attractive. Don't abuse anything that you're supposed to use to very quickly.
Moved to approve the resolution.
Do have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Resolution passes, thank you. Uh, item F, discussion of mobile eating courts and regulations, and I will turn this one over to Mr. Larry Orridge.
I just wanted to bring this up, because I've had some conversations with some of our local eating establishments in town, and I think there's been some concern, I've had many conversations with one of them, and I wish he was here tonight, he's, uh, off tonight. But this was adopted, I think, back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the regs that we have now, and I think I emailed those out to y'all. So, one, one of the things that kind of, to me, is. One, one of the things that kind of to me is. The council set a, a restriction on mobile food carts couldn't be within a set distance of existing food vendors. So if you've got a restaurant, uh, a mobile eating cart can't be right outside. And the council placed a hundred foot restriction on that. Hundred foot's not very far. I mean, it's literally right across the street from. And we've had that downtown have, I mean, I've got an earful, trust me. And as long as they're a hundred feet, we can't stop over doing it. The, the problem for most of the eating is they don't mind. Sharing with my people. They don't mind having competition. They don't want somebody that's selling the exact same thing they are right out something. So that, that's kinda where the issue comes in with our, with our existing food vendors. Um, years ago, when we first adopted regs, I remember Ron Stinchcomb standing in the council chambers. And he was a, uh, you know, he owned the restaurant at the time. And he felt very strongly that he invested in this community. He paid utilities every month. He uh, paid sales tax and property tax to the city. And that's, you know, there should be some kind of restrictions on mobile vendors that come in once or twice a. A year sometime and siphon business away from a business that he's invested. So I think it's, it's important that we realize times have changed. Mobile food vending is becoming a bigger and bigger thing everywhere. But it's also important that we look out for our existing businesses. The distance requirement, it really becomes tough downtown, especially if you want food vendors to be present. To get that spacing, if it's more than a hundred foot, it really, there's a lot of restrictions on where you can put something. We do allow them on city streets, as you probably saw there. Uh, the restriction is they have to be in a right of way. It's away from intersections so people can see. They have to be facing the sidewalk when they serve. So you don't have people standing out in the street. Uh, one suggestion I would, I would have is we've never allowed food vendors on city property. In Mont Park, I would not advise you to do that all the time. Maybe allow it for special events. And if we do that, I think that needs to be defined what those special events are. But certain times of the year, I think it would be very helpful, like during downtown open houses and parades and things like that. If we have a place that vendors could set up. And Mont Park seems to be the most viable, just because there's a parking there, there's places for them to hook up. They're not interfering with any other existing businesses. So just getting your thoughts on this, like I say, we have that, at least one business downtown that expresses. Uh, interest in changing. I think the hundred foot is kinda surprising because what happened is a vendor wanted to put. Um, set up right next door to them. And they said, no, you have to give approval if it's less than a hundred feet. So they had to seek approval from whoever it is that I'm asking about. And they wouldn't sign the approval. Well, they turned around and just moved across the street and were open that weekend. So. Uh, the other consideration that I think we need in the ordinance as well is a noise limitation. That's been the other big issue with these mobile vendors. They sometimes have generators running. Um, I know we have one that's right outside Logan Mules one weekend. Stacy and Sheree live above Logan Mules. So we had an issue with them being able to sleep. I think they fixed that problem this past weekend by shutting it off at nine o'clock. But still, from what I understand, very, very loud. So we may wanna consider something to address the noise. We may wanna consider the distance to existing businesses. And we may want to address allowing them on city property during special events. Leave it up to y'all, discuss and see if you wanted to change this thing.
Mr. O'Ridge, what was it before we changed it to a hundred feet?
Well, basically, we didn't, uh, the ordinance in the past had a lot of restrictions. I think it was four hundred feet. The whole city block that they had even upper fine places. Um, the city and council shortened it to a hundred feet.
I was just wondering the distance between. I mean, I know you would start our downtown in Mont Park, if, if that would. That would uh, fall into what used to be the existing city ordinance as far as the.
Four hundred feet probably would. Four hundred foot's about a city block or a short city block. Four hundred fifty foot's probably an average six block. I'm not sure we can ever satisfy everybody, but I do understand, especially when you've got business. Have invested in our community. I think we have a probably some kind of a possibility to protect it.
Yes, ma'am.
With the downtown, we just allow them only in Mont Park?
That would, that would be the thing, would you restrict it only to Mont? The only reason I brought up Mont Park is it just had, it's, it's more set up for.
This thing that if you, that would solve your down, I mean, cause with the street, whether it's gonna be redone, it's gonna.
If you allow city property to be used for these. Then we can't restrict who uses it. So. Uh, let's say we let somebody set up on the weekend and we don't have any restrictions on when they can do it. If we let one, we have to let all. That's what Parker has told me in the past. We've had people ask about using the library parking lot. That's the same thing. If I allow one, then we have to allow all. So there's no stop to it once you do that.
Could you collect fees for that?
You absolutely probably could collect fees for that, yeah. Biggest problem is if you've got a library parking lot, you don't want can food trucks out there taking up the parking for the people that are thinking of using the library.
Well, anywhere they park.
So there needs to be one of the stations that where.
They like their events or summer events and there are different things that they do for the children that I prefer to do like shaved eyes.
So there's no way in that to, for as the city property to make it for special events only?
Yeah, I think you can do whatever you want. It's just then you have to start being really specific on.
What is a special event?
A lot of thought in which event you're gonna allow these. These uh, exceptions for.
Can you not do it by permit similar, similar to like yard sales? And you could kind of just like set the hours they can be there. They have to apply for where they need. And then you know, if you already had five in the library parking lot, like we're capped out there.
They're saying there's a hundred dollar annual emergency.
Let's see, we could change that and it could be every time.
I, I would just be real careful again. Once you're allowed for one, you're allowed for all. So yeah. I'm not sure probably Dr. Parker, but. I think if we're gonna set a limit, it needs to be defined what the limit is for each location. So that it's not us arbitrarily telling them that, you know, will you hit the limit? I, I think it needs to be in black and white defined. It's part of Mont Park and any of our parks. I know the aquatic park, we've had vendors want to set up there quite a bit. And again, they're competing with water park concessions, so we don't know. Usually it's a shaved ice or something like that that wants to do it, but for special events, I'd say it's.
Number four, it says the applicant agrees to move to a different location for a forty-eight hour time period. This time period includes onsite setup and breakdown. The applicant agrees to move at least three hundred twenty-five feet away or out of sight view of the previous location of Mr. Mitchell forty-eight hour time period is live. So they can only set up for forty-eight hours of.
And that's not a short term permit. There's creative types of permits, short term and medium and long term. If they get a short term permit, it really cuts down on what they have to do. They don't have to go through planning permission approval or anything like that. But they can only be set up for one location.
Forty hours.
And then they have to do.
That's more kinda like a, like a downtown event kinda thing. If I remember what that was kinda set up for, wasn't it?
You know, I mean, we've got one level then and you all know what I'm talking about. They move around a lot. They're up a dollar down.
I was just thinking that short permit when we did that was kinda more like for like, like the street dance kinda thing or the parade or something.
The, the big difference is on the short term, you don't have to have the facilities. You don't have to have the rent. You don't have to have the paid parking. You don't have to have the. Infrastructure.
Are you talking if, with that a long term at, at Mont Park or just like a short term like on site?
Again, that's up to council, but I would recommend.
So could you leave it up to like the special events, whoever's running the special event? Then they can, cause then they decide who's gonna be there and who's not.
You certainly don't want, you know, or somebody can't park back there and take their kids playing because there's so much.
I think the biggest problem we have is the downtown and that parking's already congested pretty bad and you drag a truck down there and park it, especially along Buchanan. It's gonna make it, so maybe not. Kinda like we did.
Allow all the food vendors they want in Mont Park for a special event. They take away all your parking for the downtown dance.
Maybe you should take out the long term altogether. Cause ninety consecutive days and just make short type short term, what it is just.
When you get to long term, it's basically like setting up.
A permit isn't.
And it has to go through the planning commission and get approved, just like alarm scale development.
It would be like a food court, wouldn't it?
That was Joe Ben's talking about before we talked about taking something out. You have a developer researching that right now.
Yeah, that would be like for a permanent food court. Uh, a couple of years ago, the business up here, she had permanent spots that she went through planning motion and got approved. And she ran utilities out to them and that sort of thing. They had pay parking, they had access to restaurants, they had all the work.
I think more restrictive might help some areas maybe where we're having issues.
Do we have strategic ground areas for these cars or is it free?
Have to be in a commercial zone.
Okay. But anywhere there, that, that for grass, like they.
Yes, and, and on the short term, and there's language in there, we get to review the application and the location. If there's, for some reason, we feel like there's an issue with the location, we don't know. Uh, I did tell them another, they could see out front Logan Mules after the first time because I found out that there was a noise issue. And then they corrected the noise issue. But uh, we're gonna look at it in safety. We're gonna look at uh, traffic concerns, anything like that. If we see an issue, we're gonna, we're not gonna approve a short term.
Noise is a factor into it for sure. I would say noise for sure. Don't want generated.
That's language for noise introduction. I mean, ours are generated with a purr quiet.
Right, yeah. But I mean, also it's, some point you kinda gotta have a certain quiet, kinda like in a, in your camp in somewhere. You gotta shut them off. Yeah, something like that, you know. But then also a decimal level maybe, so you've got the, the monster.
Do we wanna allow city property for special events or?
I'd say your time would be negated at that point too though, cause like at the parade, if it's nine thirty and someone is trying to sell funnel cakes. We're telling them they have to stop at nine because it's too loud.
Incentive, I guess, is that it's in certain, certain decimal level or something.
Let me talk to Parker about that.
To use the city, I think it would be real like, to talk to one of the library has got an event, you know, that they are bringing. I mean, I think we're gonna be real, you gotta define that. That, that needs to be a pretty narrow.
I think we could slide it in there. Then if the city, if it's a city sponsored event, the city can do whatever they want.
Yeah, right.
It's our property.
Yeah. I think that needs to be really defined so it doesn't end up a free for all on us.
Are there anything things that would help? Like how they set up everything or does it work? I can't think of the right. That's what I would say too.
My biggest thing is we have to be pretty careful that city staff aren't the ones saying. I like yours and I don't like, you know, this one. And because that's when somebody's gonna challenge it and say. So with the criteria, I mean, I do agree with you. I've seen some food carts that I went. But it's tough to pick winners and losers.
If they have the health certification.
That's part of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
City dealers, properties, cities, city sponsored event would be the way to. We could, we could go with signs in each location and how many there's gonna be in that location.
I think what we could do, and Mayor will love this, but I mean, like, um, we have a city ordinance in place now that Mayor can approve for special events. Outdoor serving and alcohol. And we did this recently at the chili cook-off. We've done it for bicycle races where they had a tent. Uh, you could ride it to where the, the mayor could approve. Special events in Mont Park.
Did, did those special events, did I do the ABC to get payment for that?
Do what?
Did those special events like that do the ABC to get payment for the, which is a.
Not if they're giving it away, they don't.
They don't have a giving away.
A, ABC has told us this whole, we've been over this baby seat several times and it's very gray. They said we kinda leave it up to cities.
Okay.
Anybody selling it, order a gift ball.
Right.
What we really do is just eliminate uh, open container.
Yeah.
For here, so that way you can have no, we're just not policing.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing to do there.
We actually adopted that.
Is that annual fee the norm? The hundred dollar?
It's what?
Is it the norm? Like local cities? Am I reading that right? A hundred dollars?
I don't remember if we researched that. Uh, but it's, it is twelve month period. So if we issue one May first, we give until May first the next year. And we've never had anybody market that dollar. I mean, we have some people that only come into town once or twice, like Beavertales, uh, but they pay a hundred dollars here just like.
But the one that we referenced earlier, they still just pay a hundred dollars a year to be set up every weekend? Do they also have the city business license?
Yeah, if food vendors, if they, if they buy a permit for food vending, that covers their.
She brings that.
That's really cheap.
Well, that's up to them.
But if you did it by permit.
They can, they can use as many as they want to. Like you can move just two or thirty bucks and then you better come there more once.
And that's where maybe like buying. They go on special events there, you waive the. Permit fee and have event rules or whatever that they would have to abide by. But as far as the ones setting up every weekend, whatnot, I can see where a city business would be, a restaurant would be really upset by that. Cause they're getting in there for a hundred dollars and no utility use.
Right. Like I said, the one I talked to, they were, they were most upset because they were literally posting advertisements on the front of their trailer. That were direct competition for what they were selling.
And that's okay if it's a level play.
No, like nonprofits.
I, I think that should be added. It, it may be, it may already be there.
For like civic groups and nonprofits.
I know Lions Club has done something downtown in the past.
So if it's approved and there's a special event parade and wants to have food trucks. They set their food decides what food trucks are gonna be in that special thing. People are put in.
Again, I think the city would just restrict, you know, how many can be in there and if they first can first serve or six.
Your city owns the property. I don't know. I mean, if she, if she's on an event, it's her event. Why do we care what's been in there? As long as they're paying.
I, I think what we, what we, we're referencing two different things because. You're talking right, if we would've used Mont Park, but I think what Kay was talking about is like when we blocked off the street and they were just on the. So they just kinda curbside on the street.
Yeah, vocal points. I mean, either or, is it, I mean, will we still be allowed to have them elsewhere or is it just gonna be Mont Park? Cause like, I mean, the street dance, it would've been, cause the farmer's market was there. There really wasn't any place to.
Well, I mean, unless they wanna change this, it still allows them to be in street or otherwise. Unless they wanna change it. And I have heard everybody said it.
One thing I'd be concerned about is maybe needle them. Down the block or somewhere in there that, that central business core, since we're gonna tie in the street down. And then trying to pull the trailer into the parking.
One of the reasons why I'm asking.
That might be the only place, and it'll be right in front of every business down there, but that might be the only thing.
Yeah, one thing I've always done.
Just restricting that fee.
We've only had maybe one or two food trucks that have actually parked on that core in, since we adopted this in the last eight, ten years.
Most of them are not.
And what I've always done when they've applied is I've made sure that they've gone and talked to the business owner and got their permission before they.
Cause you're taking up.
I think there was one in front of Kay's one time, wasn't there? Yeah, I think it might've been something we were involved in, might've been a second Saturday.
Or is this thing that you're taking up the one and two parking spots?
We talked about parking it there and we ended up in your parking.
Yeah. The reason why I was asking, because we talked about second Saturdays, we're trying to figure out ways to second Saturdays. And make a little more, cause we don't make that much. So we can continue to do three things that we do. And we talked about having the food trucks pay a small fee, cause now, you know, we used to have to beg them to come and now they're asking us to come to our events. So we can charge them a little fee for second Saturdays and raise a little money. But if the city decides and then they're parking on the city and they're going there, then that kinda kills it for us to be able to make a little.
Have a perfect answer.
Let them in for the event somehow.
The event, so like for example, on second Saturdays, Kay would have to come in and pull the permit and then they would deal with her, I mean, on those.
So she pays the fee and then they pay her vote?
Well, if she's charging, she would just charge to cover that and make money.
They have to bring their health inspection, so they'll take their health.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, we would still have to verify, we have to verify safety.
Or maybe not even she pulls the permit, but she requests access to the city streets for whoever is coming. But where is there? I mean, are you gonna just pinpoint?
Because even on, like it said on the street, all of that.
They're gonna hurry to solve these problems, and I just want to break with your opinion that I had did have, why don't I give a proper between now and next month, and maybe we need perhaps like y'all look at, if there's any correction or you're gonna die in.
And look at some other, maybe people that have. Or it's like Main Street, what they do.
Let me, let me do some more research.
If you take like five pretend they're saying, don't keep pretending, I I think we would probably just like flat fee, I mean, I think just. Not anything major.
Twenty-five, fifty dollars.
That would be easier on you all.
Well, thank y'all for the discussion, we'll move to line item eight, reports to committee sanitation, Sue Clark.
Um, sanitation is going really well, you did. And uh, and seeing what all we could get that was out there. Existing tributaries, the one that got a little bit, and uh, the closest one to it, nine cents a bag. And then it went up. But out of the three that we won submitted, what we asked, the other two were disqualified for not submitting what we asked, we just changed the bid, but there was only one qualified there. That they, the next highest. Raise our prices.
You got any more carts, did you figure that out?
Um, age I've got, parts coming from another tributor, he had eighty on the log that he didn't ship. Uh, that probably got available, they're blue, they will not have a C logo, but they are, uh, serial number. That's supposed to be on their way, proposed production date in December.
Throw up a bag, do we need to start looking at this, doing carts all the way?
There's been some discussion of that, trying to transition cart only by the year twenty twenty-five.
I thought that was a good idea, what Bree said last meeting about target to polytech about those, do they make things that better? I think they do, don't they? It's not, might be worth it, I don't know.
They, as long as we, a hundred and twenty-five and one, they just. We get them sold a lot and they provide.
Special, hang it looks, and he, and customers always wanting this. Cause there's this turn out missing, they knew it was in the neighborhood.
Uh, street department, we defer to Chuck.
Street department, uh, you've seen, we've been doing a lot of work on sidewalks, you can crosswalk stuff that we've added in proper areas. And uh, it's about to do the special project, uh, by the growth phase two, we had a uh. Meeting and updated that the other day, I mean, things were improvements going on out by the big cannon intersection, where they're gonna be widening that and give it a turn like. So it's going really fast, they've invited to come out and book it several times, if that's possible, and you get a problem, but they haven't connected to the existing over there by the school because they still have to. And that streets are going really well.
Thank you, sir. Ward and Sue, with Doc Stumble.
Uh, we discussed all the stuff with the wastewater expansion, uh, we're still on schedule to be substantially completed by the end of the year, it's not going to be operational for probably middle February. The unknown factor when we move it on that slide and they did. Twenty-one days for each one, that is right, the problem is, is we are close to capacity for two existing bio units, we can't take one of them out of service without having to, they went up and running an operation. Be able to stay within our. We still think we're gonna have issues with that, gonna work with any issues if we have. Uh, base two A downtown, you can see it's under construction right now, they're trying to do as much as they can while they wait for the greatest style to come in, put it down there on cover. They wanted to stay out of the downtown area, but availability of the concrete coverage, they want to put down there, discover more than where they can. Plan that, but we are working with them and put the coal patch asphalt back in, the disgravel, so they're working on this.
I guess it's gonna keep running west.
Until the concrete covers and they'll probably. Because it's gonna take a long time to put that line in service, to pressurize it, testing it on the bacterial biological sample, where they use half two meters. This is just a word.
Still have a question, do we have a way of notifying people when we were gonna have a outage from the water system?
There's not a a call out list or anything, any mobile, doing social media, if we have a specific area that we know we're gonna interrupt service, then we can call.
I got asked about that, when we shut the line off for the life big repair, yeah, if there's a way to like notify the affected area, I didn't know what kind of waves.
Or which one?
Dip fire and all that, when we shut it off for that big repair, it kind of was right about the time everybody was coming home.
Well, and that that was, I mean, they had no warning, they had no warning when that water was gonna start rushing all around. He took that leak for three days walking the field. Sixty-seven people, the food on the ground, that's most unusual one I've ever seen, and I've been around for a while, it's over two hundred thousand gallons a day.
The pond got full.
I don't know.
It came out somewhere.
Cause it did come out the ground near the pond, so everybody assumed it was overflowed from the pond itself. We actually contacted Leach Tech and had a, as soon as they pulled onto the lot. And they stepped it out a couple of sticks, it left, we passed it, to expose the line, fix the repair, and the line back on. Our old billing system had.
The new used to do it, I used.
But the new billing system doesn't have that often, so.
I remember getting one, I went to.
We could do it through Co-Grad. They would have, they'd have been saying one of two.
That's why, you know, there was something about with that.
It probably interrupts service for about thirty to forty minutes, and it would send out every one hundred persons. And we don't have a way to find just what segment.
Okay, I didn't know.
And e- and even Co-Grad, I mean, it's an imperfect system because it's only gonna notify the people that are assigned to Co-Grad. Or anybody else that they got that they've been able to identify in their system, they do identify people outside of, people have assigned that, but they don't get them all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our court system, um, we collected thirty-eight thousand five sixty-eight seventy this month. We spent thirty-seven thousand eight eighty-three seventy, and so we owe to the good six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And if you know anything about the normal reports that Mr. gives us month after month after month, it'd be good, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, we're gonna classify that as a really, really good month. So our court system had a good month. That was that speed stamp finally showed up, huh? Fire department will turn it over to JC.
Yeah, first off, we have a radio, but after what, some good fact, here are the people. Got a few little squeaks that are still working on, but. People working around the group. Hope you go, email us and ask whether it's a problem, on state, send visitor, park the town or decent or they land into the, the car park, prison bed, welcome to, and enjoy with us at seven o'clock.
Have you got the truck radios too already, JC?
No, the actual, uh, truck radio, they're still waiting, I I can't understand what they're waiting on, two weeks, yeah, we're back on that cycle.
Might see him sometime next year.
But they're, they're working very well with the hand mill, they work well with the hand mill. But it is kind of inconvenient to try to. Oh, our hand mill dry.
Thank you, JC. Parks and Rec, Chris Paul.
One thing I gotta relate is, uh, take care, I just gotta email everybody that has the uh. Part, the rental part fees on it. Not gonna make a decision, I, I want everybody to look at that and see about raising some of those limits, some of those fees on there, I think we're really under, underfunded on those. I don't know what to go from where, from where to where, I haven't really had a comparison of where it started yet, and that's maybe something I'll. See if I can get, me and Larry, or me and you, maybe we chat some other people and see if they, if they can find their fields out and stuff, but. Get them there, or we can make our own decision, I don't know, I don't know. One around the path, but some of these other two rents, I'm not gonna say are original, but they do get overflowed. Right, right, so, um, maybe next month we'll have something we can look at, but I just wanted to, that way everybody has.
We get some all leagues sometimes in the summer, the rent.
And plus that is something apart then. We ever build new ones, you know, new sets, you know, we'll have some place.
We don't, we don't get much from people around all the years.
Right, and like you said, I think. I think you mentioned before today, even if they even pay or not, we don't know, I mean, sometimes they go out there.
Oh, you like them during the day.
Right, but.
We know there's a lot of heat from practice there that we never know about because they're in and out, we don't see.
Yeah, but especially if there even lights, there even lights out there, I saw there's a light go, you know, it's like, that, the dark, where we're charging, it's probably costs more just to put that switch.
When you flip that switch, the meter.
Exactly, you look into that, so that's it, that was just my only thing I had on my checklist, do you have anything else for?
Uh, no, as we talked about last month, we ordered a handicap screen, we put it up there twenty-fourth, it is here, uh, it requires quite a bit of concrete for the access, and we have installed that, you have the. Resources to prioritize what we're doing, we're also doing sidewalks over at, uh, Green Park, connecting those subdivisions to the south side of Green Park, the winding trail. Now that we assume that fifty percent or fifty foot wide strip there, we did your sidewalk, connect with some.
I appreciate that.
So it will, it will be done, uh, guys, probably start on this, I mean, because, uh, we have, uh, double route to try this, we can kind of all add both that. And, uh, we're getting ready to order the new bathroom, and we'll be going to Pat's Bridge as well.
Awesome.
It's a single stall, I think that's.
We said we ordered it, I was trying to, that's for me, but we ordered a porta potty.
It's estimated about fifteen, eighteen.
It's basically looks like, almost like the walls of a trailer. Police department, oh, I'm sorry.
We're just excited about that, definitely the advantage is, and it's financial.
Right, yeah.
Police department, chief workman.
Uh, JC said the radios are great, um, getting rid of a whole lot of officer safety, first quadrant safety issues. Uh, we can literally talk to anybody, say, police, the Rogers, Benji, if you're at a major event, we've had one, um, some of our big, I mean, it's nice, it's kind of chaotic. That everybody gets the channel, so, um, that. In police world of emergency, I don't think there's been that well money, that that money is well worth it, so. It doesn't need thirteen million dollars, you know, so hopefully, yeah, we will all retire, we have a new rating system, um. Visiting, uh, sent a call log out about a week ago. And you get a lot of, I know we've got a lot of questions, there's a, typically when incidents happen, that's got a prior growth address, everybody assumes prior growth, you do that all the time. Of course, you know, Washington County was involved in the shooting, um. Everybody assumes prior growth, cause it was shooting prior growth or whatnot, so we did have one officer that was responding there, seeing, I actually got a letter from the sheriff, I didn't say anything. Or his, or he wasn't involved in a shooting, he was there to reiterate. This past week too, um, I was actually in a meeting when it happened, it sounded like it was what it did, so. I also put in for a state grant, I received that, it was fifty, fifty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, almost sixty thousand dollars that I've seen. Actually, that starts this week, um, quicker ticket, so the next week, yeah, I put on seatbelt, so not just prior growth, everywhere, so. Plus this holiday, so a lot of people. This is good.
Thank you, Chiefs. I think, I think Chief sometimes glaze over how quickly he says we're just busy and even his kudos to JC. Um, and I just caught bits and pieces of it, but there was a woman bleeding out, right, and tourniquets had to be put on, so. Wait, just, there's a lot of times you hear first responders just go, oh, it's busy and we did our job, but they saved the woman's life out there the other day at that, that accident, so. Um, when, when we talk kudos, sometimes.
And and that was actually officer, you know, officer Gibson, who was the same officer with France, he's the same officer at that bad bill, who, you know, um, that poor guy, um. He's, he's always at the, he was, but out of anybody we've got, um, he's one of the one to be, sad to say, that's a lot of stress and, especially when you get those adrenaline dumps, it's something, uh, it's something to experience, um, so, but. You know, go right into what he needs to do, so we appreciate it, hopefully.
Uh, long range plan and Brooke Rigg.
Yep, we met with Julian again, uh, to discuss kind of some final overview and. Changes, some smaller changes, there wasn't anything huge, but I do think probably in the next month or two, he'll be ready to present final.
Yeah, the, the, I think the game's one of Dr. Julian after the meeting, we're gonna try to have the public hearing for the new zoning map in December. Uh, we haven't set that date yet, but I'll send it to you just with, she and I agree on a date. So we'll have the public hearing and as soon as, probably I'm gonna wait till this week, but I'm gonna start plugging in the last stuff that we talked about. Into the new zoning map and get with Parker and try to get that thing cleaned up a little bit. Uh, expecting the council to adopt the zoning map and the new zoning ordinance at the same time, probably in January or February. So that's kind of the schedule, I think we're a little.
One of the biggest changes I think is that we have done away with the R one seven five zoning. And anything that comes through us designated to that would have to be put into a HUD, which we set some pretty specific design standards and stuff that will, um. Clean up those high density developments.
Yeah, they, they, they agreed to some. Yeah, they, they, they agreed to some language in the PUDs, uh, the other night. If, if a developer chooses to go with that high density in a PUD type format. He's gonna have to agree to these new standards that are in the PUD requirements. So he's gonna be agreeing to design standards as far as what kind of surfaces on the outside of the houses and some other things that they agreed to the other night, so. If they're gonna choose to go by density, they're gonna have to agree to do some extra things that, that I think will make the neighborhood a little bit more important. The other big thing, and I think I've already pointed this out to y'all, but I want to be clear with you, on the zoning classifications as far as the subdivision densities. Uh, the older ordinance, of course, if you were in an R one, it listed very specific ten thousand square foot, hundred foot frontages. Uh, the older throws all that out and it's just density based, so it's four per acre for an R one, it's a six per acre for an R one point five, and it's seven per acre. For whole multifamily, so. It's a little bit different way of looking at it, but it gives developer a little more flexibility when they're designing subdivisions. We're not having to make massive variances, because this lot doesn't quite meet the restrictions, and this one is bigger than those required. Now, if he wants to make one a little bit bigger, one that's a little bit smaller, they can, as long as the densities at the end of the day work out. So it's just a little different way of looking at it.
Senior citizens, Paula Ditmo.
I text Lance, he told me, um, I text him on Friday. Tell me the opening bids for construction was at two, that day at two o'clock, and then Larry called me too, but anyway, um. He said the bids were a hundred thousand more than we had. They're working on getting more money. City council will have to author the change. What does that mean? I mean, I understand what he's saying, what do we have to do?
Mayor's been opening a new stadium.
Okay.
Yeah, there's five bids, the low bid came in at three hundred and twenty-five thousand, we had a little bit over two hundred thousand in a grant, so. If they, they gone back to the grant proposal to see if they can get more money, and if that, if that comes in, because y'all had to approve the. The grant money to be used for the senior center, so y'all would just have to do a resolution to change that or amend it.
Well, they get it, my gosh.
You'll have to approve the change to be a new amount and adopt the, uh. Adopt the bid, approve the bid.
Okay.
So put a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars off on a two hundred thousand dollar project as well.
A little out of the line, what they thought.
Fifty percent increase on some construction.
I don't know if they'll ever get it done. I don't think so either, I don't either, I think it's gonna be just like this. When I get home and start going up there, it'll treat it like it is.
Library, Tony Cunningham.
I'm all speaking from the. I used to go fortunate enough to be down at the library when the mayor came waddling in with a. Under his arm. And I was, uh, fortunate enough to see the restored painting. And it's located in our library, and if you have not been by there to see it yet, you need to go down and get a big picture of it. I sent you the one. But after seeing it, Chris and Paula and the rest of you guys, I think you'll be tickled to death with the way it turned out, something the city can be very proud of.
Sure I will be.
Me too, Tommy.
It's, yeah, it's just a light coming in from those windows.
How was Chris Powell's, like, a quote?
But you fire, that's all I have.
All right, y'all, for, for announcements, if, uh. You got announcement?
Uh, just to go back to the park, um, committee. The grant that we had from the state matching from last year to do the improvements.
On the money for it, yeah.
We were allowed up to a hundred nineteen thousand, well, uh, coming well in our budget, because. We submitted all the paperwork for a hundred and seven thousand.
Awesome. December second, I'll turn it to Kay Shreve, so you can tell us all the details.
December second is the.
Yeah.
Pass a must, uh, preservation dinner, six thousand dollar ticket, or even table, main sponsor, table sponsor, or. Premium, one premium sponsored one. Um, love to see everybody there, of course, uh, Raisback is actually going to be the one to cater. They're gonna do Alfredo and chickens, we're getting meatballs, salad, um, garlic bread, drinks, and there'll be other. Things, there will be a silent auction, um, right, silent auction still. And there'll be some, um, speakers there as well, uh, I think somebody from Main Street, Arkansas, I don't know exactly who that is yet. Rick and I both been in, out of town, but.
And so where do we get our tickets from?
You can order them online, uh.
Yeah, right.
Go to the Main Street thing there online and, or you can come down and look.
Um, they have to jump on it, but on December eighth, one week later, shop with a cop is doing the exact same thing. Uh, Safadaz is a gangsters and glam, does that sound right, chief? He's not paying attention, it's a, I think it's. And, uh, but there's this more of a dress up, and then they have a trivia night wrapped around it, but it's, uh, it's basically the same thing, it's fifty dollars a ticket, so they're more expensive. Um, or you could reserve a table, it is a trivia night as well as they are reaching out to us to, to give the. The, the bypass on alcohol, so they, they plan on serving alcohol at like giving, they plan on freely giving alcohol at night. And so that as well will be at, um, Avenue four seven nine. And you can reach out to Purple Steels if you want tickets to that one. Um, and then, uh, Coco Crawl, the day after December ninth is your Coco Call and Coco Crawl and Parade. And December eighth is the. Yeah, the tour homes.
Then the ghost crawling parade, then the after parade party.
J C, you invited everyone to your Christmas dinner, but you didn't say a time or a place.
December eleven, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. At the fire station. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll hold. Merchant meeting tomorrow night. And we so adjourned.